Board room and online presenting. Um, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask if there's any amendments to the agenda.
No, Madam Chair, but our remote access policy requires that, uh, the board approve any requests for remote attendance, and I have received correspondence from Mrs. Bender and Mr. Stonehill to attend this meeting via, um, remote access due to the local emergency and the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, I would like to, uh, I'd advise the board or the quorum present to take a vote authorizing their request to attend this meeting via remote.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discretion? Please, please, please.
Aye.
Any, any care of those, I motion carries. Right now, I'd also like to say for the next part after the public comment for our presentation for questions, I'm going to try to go around to. And if you don't move your voice when I ask questions, is there a question, then you jump up, and if it works, and then you can raise your, is that clear to everyone?
Yes.
All right, Ben, do you have any, uh, public comments?
Not online or, not online or in person, Madam Chair.
Nobody online?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, now I'll bring it to this Dr. Young in the school board presentation.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll default to Dr. Benson.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Benson?
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm certainly happy to be the main attraction in an experiment, um, and to be here to, uh, represent on behalf of our school board the FY21 proposed budget. Um, what I'd like to do is take you, um, through and make sure that everyone's aware of the process that we go through in developing our annual operating budget for your consideration, um, to summarize key information, key variables, um, and of course get down to what we understand as of, uh, the point where the board, the school board approved the budget.
Uh, to be how we will be situated from a revenue standpoint. Um, I'd like to start off by saying that we are certainly in unprecedented times. Um, just this morning, I was on a phone call with the state superintendent of public instruction. Uh, he was conveying to superintendent statewide that it would not be surprising to him for the general assembly to revisit, um, all budgets to include K-12 funding for the FY21 year. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that to you, that we went through this process and ultimately the school board approved this funding request before, uh, all of our current situation came to light. So it would not be surprising to me at all for us to have to really kind of start over on the revenue side, um, and, uh, and redefine how we will be situated for you at a later date. We just have to see how that plays out with the reconvene session of the general assembly. I've also been made aware that, um, the state, uh, will be receiving stimulus funds, uh, from the federal government, and those funds, part of those funds will be distributed, uh, for use for K-12 education. Uh, we do not have any definitive guidance as to how they would be used, uh, outside of, uh, a distribution methodology that will be associated with, uh, the same methodology used for a Title I fund distribution. So I mentioned those things just to, to kind of put a, an asterisk on what I'm going to present to you, that certainly on the revenue side, we fully expect things to change. How much we just don't know until the general assembly, um, issues their guidance. Okay. Chris, I'm going to try to advance this. Okay, so every good budget, um, is grounded in the, uh, in the organization's mission, our vision, and our core values. So I wanted to make sure that for the board and for our public, uh, they understand that this, these, these are our mission, vision statements and our core values. These guide our work daily, and they certainly help guide our thinking when we seek to define how we will utilize, um, taxpayer funds to promote our educational system in King George. I won't read them to you, but, uh, I think that if you look, you know, we do, uh, we are responsible under our core values. Um, we value citizenship, uh, with our students, and we believe ourselves to be responsible stewards of the resources that we are generously afforded, uh, to put to use to help our students. So just to summarize for you, um, late last calendar year and every year, I put together a timeline for the school board that I'm required to do, and this timeline includes key benchmark, uh, events in our process. So we began back in, or we began back in December. Um, we do solicit, and I'm going to share with you some, real quickly, some graphics that capture the survey responses and the input that we gather from our staff. We invite all staff, teachers, bus drivers, um, our custodial employees. Um, all of our staff has an opportunity then through the survey to not only, uh, rate how well our current budget is performing in, with respect to supporting their job performance, uh, but also an opportunity to give us feedback, commentary that we can use to, um, to define and plan expenditures for the next year. Um, we also then, um, identified those key variables that we know will be in play. Uh, this year, we had an increase in VRS, uh, costs to the employer. Um, we are always anxious to get our health insurance, uh, premium prediction back. I'm very happy to say that again, this is, I think, the third year we have not, uh, realized any increase in the premiums, which is good news because any compensation increase we're, we're, um, able to provide our employees, uh, is not consumed with increased health insurance premium. So we're very pleased with that. Um, and we also use a tool that I want to share with you. It's called a budget builder, and it's something that's used across the schools and our departments to define and plan out our expenditures from year to year. We do not simply roll up, uh, the previous year's amount and add a percentage to it. Um, we go back and we start from scratch. Uh, and this is, we, 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 I talk about two sides of our budget. We have stuff and we have staff. And so for the stuff side of our budget, we use a tool called the budget builder, which is a homegrown spreadsheet. And bear with me, I'm going to attempt to share this on the screen with you. Can you see it?
Yeah, I see it.
The spreadsheet, okay. So I, I won't share the entire spreadsheet, but I'll give you enough so that you'll have a, um, you'll get a feeling for what it's about. You see here at the bottom, you're looking at the summary tab, and this is a summary of all of our different, uh, departments and our schools. And out here, we use the function codes, um, so that we can transfer this information into the budget document you have. I believe you received today some documents from Dr. Young, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll see these same codes in that, uh, that detailed budget document. But this is where our, um, department heads and our principals then plan out their expenditures. And so this is a summary, has all the departments under this tab in summary fashion, then we break it out. So this is the technology, uh, department, and they will break out what they plan, um, to spend in the coming year, and they kind of, they define clearly then the needs they have. So I just wanted to share this with you. Um, you see our different departments do the same thing as far as, uh, this is gifted. We have tuition, um, associated with, uh, our regional governor schools for students. Um, but I wanted to give you an idea of what we do in preparation for what you're, you're being presented tonight. I think this is an important piece that you understand. On the stuff side of our budget, uh, our staff works very hard each year to make sure that we are making good use of every dollar, um, that is, uh, that is utilized to support next school year in this case. So that gives you a little taste of, of the tool we use. We also use this to communicate so that if, uh, an expenditure is planned centrally like textbooks or certain, uh, print materials, um, we can all see this at the same time. So principals can see what the Department of Instruction centrally is planning to make sure we don't duplicate costs, uh, to make sure that we're aware of what each other is defining in terms of, uh, following year. And of course, it helps me then to sit down with each of them and vet through, uh, their requests. Okay, let me try to get back to.
And Rob, if I may interrupt while you, um, transitioning, um, I'd ask that all audience members on the go to meeting, please mute your microphone. We're getting feedback in the boardroom and can't hear the presentation from the school superintendent.
Yeah, I was, Doc, uh, Dr. Young, I was just going to say that be careful who's ever online because the microphones are very sensitive and we can all hear it, and then you can't hear Dr. Benson.
Okay, all right. It was tough to hear you, Dr. Young, I'm sorry. Um, are we okay to continue or?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Okay, so once, um, once our department heads and our schools, uh, go through that process, um, I, at the same time, I'm receiving guidance from our school board, um, any priorities that they would like for me to, to keep in mind as we draft then that, uh, that next budget. We turn the calendar year, um, and I collect staff survey results, and again, I'm going to share that with you on the next slide, but, uh, we collect the staff's survey results. We have, uh, the projected expenditures from the staff. All along, they are using those staff survey results and commentary to help them define and expenditures for the next year. We also by policy, um, invite our professional organizations, the King George Education Association and Virginia Professional Educators Association. Uh, those representatives have a chance to present to the school board any priorities they would like considered in the budget. We get to February, and by that time, we have completed a preliminary draft of the budget. Uh, the school board receives that preliminary budget. They have an opportunity to provide feedback, schedule work sessions if needed. Uh, we then host a public hearing for the school board to collect any citizen comment, incorporate that into their planning. Um, and that gets us to March, and March this, this, uh, earlier this month, the school board adopted, um, the budget that you will, um, see or have in, in front of you, and then ultimately that gets us to the point where we're able to share with you, uh, the school board's proposed budget for next year. So I know that's a lot, but I wanted to make sure that, um, our public understands, and, and you certainly understand as a board, that this is not a document that I draft, um, over a week or so closed into a room. We have a, a very inclusive process that we use. Um, we try to make sure we gather input from everyone, uh, at least give them an answer, but on our budget. The next step, or we're concurrent with that process. Let me, let me, uh.
Hey, Dr. Benson, can I interrupt one second again?
Yeah, go ahead. It's good timing. I wanted to maximize this here. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, once again, I know some new people joined us online. Please be careful. The microphones are very sensitive and it picks them up, and then everyone is not able to hear. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Dr. Benson.
I don't mean to mess up, but I might even suggest everybody mute. If you mute your microphone, uh, that helps keep the feedback down if there's feedback.
That, that works. I'll leave mine open, though.
Right, okay. So the first question.
Yes, sir. Before we cut off, whoever Michael Swan is, your microphone is on, and that's where we're getting the, uh, interference. There you go. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Dr. Benson.
Okay, we do ask, uh, we use the survey to also gauge how well our current budget is performing in terms of supporting our employees' jobs, what they need to do. Teachers, um, custodians, everyone, we try to use their feedback to gauge, well, how well did we budget? How well do we use those funds from, for this year in supporting our employees and fulfilling, uh, our mission? So the first question we ask them is, uh, to respond to this statement, and that is that I have the, the, I have available to me the supplies needed to fulfill my job responsibilities. And so I'm, I'm pleased to share this with you. It's tough for me to see, but, um, you can see there that, that of the respondents, 95% either agreed or strongly agreed that they have the supplies, uh, which is a strong indicator that we hit the mark in terms of our budget with supplies. Next, we asked them about programs or services that the school division procured, uh, how well those allowed folks to fulfill their job responsibilities. And again, very high, 94%, either agreed or strongly agreed. We also asked them if they have the equipment that they need, uh, to do their jobs. Not as strong, but still, still, an 87% of our employees, um, believe that the budget was providing them the equipment needed, uh, is a fair statement. So in conjunction with each of these questions, we do ask if you either disagree or strongly disagree, could you provide us some feedback, some commentary about where we fell short so that we can incorporate your commentary into this next coming year's budget, uh, to try to make sure that we're, we're fulfilling the needs that our employees have in fulfilling our mission with children. So, um, another, a strong piece of our budget development process that if I didn't highlight it, you may not know that we go through this type of exercise each year, um, to make sure that we are continuously improving our ability to define and meet needs from a budget standpoint. So I talked a little bit about the staff side, or the stuff side, rather. Now we get to the staff side. Um, and each year, we do grow in terms of, um, the number of children that we serve, but we also grow in regards to some of the needs that the children we serve have. In particular, those students who have, uh, needs that we service through special education. Um, so you'll see on here, we have, and I'll just jump through the list. These are positions that we know we will need to adequately service students, uh, who have special needs. Special needs then are, are serviced, uh, the, the services we provide are predicated through what they call an individualized education plan. A team of educators, the student's family, uh, come together. They look at the student's, um, academic standing, uh, other academic variables, and they devise a plan to help support the unique needs that student has in order to be successful. Um, so you will see on here, um, a few spots where at King George High School, we will be in need of a special education teacher. We have a number of students coming up from the middle school, um, that outnumber the number of students that are graduating. Now I'll necessitate an extra teacher there for special education. Uh, our middle school, again, very same situation from the elementary schools, um, will require another special education teacher. Um, we have, uh, our, our early childhood center. We have a, a rather, um, an interesting situation in that we have an anomaly this year with our two-year-olds that are coming to us. We serve students, um, in the preschool setting and early childhood, uh, as young as age two. We, we find children through a process called Childfind, um, and we have, I believe, 11 students that are age two that will need, uh, education in our early childhood center. So you'll see there, there is a special education teacher and a paraprofessional for 11 students at the early childhood education center next year. Um, we also have a need for a special education paraprofessional. This is not a teaching position, but is, is an assistant teaching position, someone who will attend to the unique needs, uh, of the students in that classroom, or in some cases, we have, uh, children who have a need for a one-on-one para. They have such unique and such, um, extreme needs that they require a one-on-one person to be with them to help them, uh, be successful during the school day. We also have a few positions. Uh, I know that our, our school board and, um, the board of supervisors have been supportive of, of seeking, uh, strategies for increasing the number of CTE offerings or expanding our CTE programs. Um, and so we have both at the middle school and the high school, we have, uh, proposed an increase of .5 a teacher. We have half-time teachers in each of those, um, facilities, and the programs there in which they're teaching, we'd like to expand to offer more students opportunity with our CTE electives. We've also talked, um, with the CTE advisory committee has met several times. We had a presentation from, uh, Louisa County where they brought personnel out and met with our CTE advisory committee. Um, and accordingly, the recommendation, uh, through the school board is that we look at a division-wide CTE coordinator who could help establish or, or further develop opportunities that are CTE-related for our high school students, opportunities such as mentorships, internships, um, cooperative, uh, education opportunities in the community for students who would, would, uh, require a coordinator for those types of services division-wide. So that would be mainly for the middle and high school. We also have an opportunity in statewide. You've probably read, um, statewide, we are concerned as far as our reading scores at the elementary level and our, our want to, um, bolster our literacy program at the elementary level. We are proposing three, one for each elementary school, reading specialists to help in coaching and delivering services to, to small groups of students who we want to make sure are on grade level reading-wise by third grade. So there are three reading specialist positions. This was proposed last year. Um, we did not have the funding last year to secure those positions, and so we have, uh, continued that request into this budget. Um, the, the governors or the, um, the budget that has been, um, advanced thus far at the state level, uh, does seek to provide funding for school divisions to increase the counselor-to-student ratio, um, to support the mental health needs of our students. Um, in order to be in compliance with some of the legislation surrounding the additional funding the state has thus far earmarked. Um, to meet the ratio that would be required, we would need to add a counseling position at our elementary level and one at our secondary level. So that's why you see those, and then you see the, uh, parenthetical reference to, to meet the ratio required. That's a ratio required, um, by the state. We, as you know, we have a beautiful expansion, and we have plans to bring the sixth graders, uh, to the middle school level in order to create space at our elementary school and accommodate growth. Um, next year, we will be preparing for that transition. Um, so we are proposing a 10-month administrative position, uh, at the middle school with the intention of then bringing that, um, to an assistant principal position once the middle school fully accepts the sixth grade students into their facility. With the increased square footage at the middle school, the, um, obviously the, the gymnasium or the, um, the auxiliary gymnasium, um, and that new side, the new media center, uh, we do have a need for, um, additional custodial support, uh, to keep that facility in good shape. So that's really a listing of positions that we propose in this budget, uh, that target needs that we know we have. Um, so now we've, we've looked at stuff. Um, I've given you kind of a basis for our staff, uh, requirements for next year. Let me go on to some of the major differences between the current year and the proposed, um, next year budget. The board did want to maintain competitive compensation. Uh, in the budget is a, um, is proposed a 1.6 cost of living increase for employees. Uh, that is tied to social securities and the federal's, federal government's, uh, recommended COLA for the, for the, for this year. Uh, so we adopt that to try to keep our employees' salaries competitive with the cost of inflation. Um, we also have, um, included a step increase for employees. Our, our salary scales range from a little under 1% as a step increase to 2%, uh, depending on where you are in terms of longevity with our school division. Uh, so as far as compensation, that is the cost, the 984,000 is the cost for, um, providing the compensation increase to employees. Uh, we also have this year, and I'm sure on the county side, you have the same factor in play, and that is an increased VRS employer cost, uh, for us that amounted to a half million. Um, and as I mentioned before, the good news is that, um, our health insurance premiums did not go up. Uh, however, we do have new subscribers, and we have employees who have elected to, to jump on board with our coverage. So those new subscribers, uh, and they like to change, um, that amount. I can't see it on my screen, but I'm sure you can. I've got everybody who's attending covering up that side of my screen. Um, to summarize, uh, the additional staffing that I just went through on the previous slide, that cost to the school division, uh, is, is just a little more than a million dollars. Um, and then instructional resources on the stuff side, I've, I've talked, this year, our adoption for textbooks and resources, ancillary resources, we were targeting reading and language arts. That cost is 360,0752. And then resources that we like to bring on that I highlighted with the school board to support, um, social emotional learning, which would be, um, helpful, particularly since we're bringing on the extra counselors, and we're looking to help support our students from a social emotional aspect. Um, that additional cost for those programs will be $36,000. So here we get to, oh, and I'm going to have to figure out a way to minimize this. I think, Mr. Dines, or figure out a way to clear my, so I can see it. Uh, or maybe you can help me from your end, but this is a.
I think you can, you can, next, at least on mine, next to the microphone, there's a little button that says that you can share your screen, so it'll take you off, and then you should be able to see your screen down at the bottom.
Yeah, I think I have a little, Chris has given me the, um, the ability to share. Let me see if I, I don't, I hope I don't.
I have to take a bet.
Well, it's, it's no big deal. I think, can I drag these boxes that are open? Yeah, okay. I think I figured out a workaround here. So this is a summary, um, of our revenue, and, uh, I mentioned earlier, calculation sheet. Um, it's available publicly, but we, we have through the, um, finance division, the Department of Education, they will issue what they call a calculation sheet, which has preloaded formulas and, um, it's an Excel sheet that we then populate with what we call our average daily membership projection. Uh, average ADM is not enrollment. ADM is an average membership between the, um, the end of September and March. In essence, they, they basically take your attendance each day during that time period, and they divide it by the number of days, uh, school is in session, um, to then come up with a figure. That figure is very important because it is the number that is, uh, used to calculate the funding per student that we receive each year. So, um, we begin our budget by populating, well, how many students, what, what is the ADM you predict you'll have? Uh, this year, we have 4370, or we are built on 4370. Uh, we will, we believe we'll be right at meeting. Are you getting feedback? Okay. We'll be right at meeting that 4370. Next year, we predict we will serve, uh, an ADM equalling 4380. So that's the number we've used to base our revenue from the state.
I can hear you. I don't hear me there.
Yes, Doug. I'm hearing some, I don't.
Yeah, hold on, Dr. Benson. Hold on, Dr. Benson. Um, I wanted to say to whoever's online right now, just please be careful with your microphone. Please mute them if you're, um, you don't want to give comment, but, uh, the microphones will pick up things, and then it makes it hard for everyone to hear. Thank you. Dr. Benson, once again.
Thanks. So that first row, um, you see state revenue. That's our, our, our basic aid from the state, uh, that we expect. There's other state revenue, um, and I'll take this moment then to, to mention to you, one of the documents you received from Dr. Young, um, looks like this. I think you can still see, but it's a revenue document, and it defines in greater detail the sources of those revenues. Um, I certainly don't want to read three pages to you, um, but I did want to provide you for your, um, review later the, the sources of these different types of revenue. And this is a way that the school's budget is somewhat unique in that we, we pull together revenue from various sources. The most, um, relevant to you all as a governing board, of course, is the local revenue, and, um, we know that Virginia is set up in a way where, uh, a portion of the school's funding responsibility is, is taken on by the state, uh, through, uh, direct aid or other grants, um, state grants, other incentive grants. We also receive a rather smaller, relatively small portion of our funds from federal grants under the different titles, Title I, II. Um, we are in collaborative for title, funding in our Title III, um, and Title IV. We also receive funds under Title VI to support special ed students. Um, so all that to say, there are different categories of funding we received. I've summarized them here in this table for you for the purposes of this presentation, uh, and there is some, there is greater detailed information for your, for your review and the document you, you received from Dr. Young. Um, pull this out of the way. You'll see down here, the, the local revenue. Um, and again, I put a big asterisk on this. This could change and likely will change, uh, but the local revenue there you see for fiscal year 19, it should be 20 rather, and, uh, 21, uh, the difference being 927,000. Let me jump then to this next. To this table. Let me jump then to this next, to this table to give you another view of this, because there's some good news in this, I believe. You'll see fiscal 20, fiscal year 20 on the left, that column, those are the different appropriation units the state uses to categorize funding and expenditures. So we obviously use the same headings, but you'll see by appropriation unit, the amounts that were appropriated by the Board of Supervisors last year to support our Fund 250, which is our operating budget. 252 is the federal grants budget. So those are, that's money in, and it has to be spent according to a plan the school board approves and money out. The two cannot be commingled because the federal grants are intended to supplement, not supplant, services we provide. So we're focused on operational fund, which is Fund 250. You'll see that last year, for the current year, the board approved, the school, the Board of Supervisors approved local funding in the amount of $17,845,574. And that represented a 39.4% or a percentage of 39.4% of our operating budget, and we appreciate that. I think the good news is while the dollar amount, you know, the state, any time the state proposes a employee increase, they afford, they provide the funding necessary for the number of positions that are provided by the standards of quality, which in all cases for every division in Virginia is much fewer than are actually employed to teach or to serve children. So that really shifts not only a matching burden, but also a funding burden to every locality in Virginia. And so I think the good news is for the very first time in eight years that I've presented a budget, you'll see, I'm going to drag this out of the way, you'll see that the amount, while it has gone up as far as our local funding, the amount has gone up, the percentage being requested, particularly for a first draft from the budget to the Board of Supervisors, is actually less relatively in terms of the percentage being supported on the local side than it is for the state, which is, in my opinion, and of course, it's all contingent on what the General Assembly does at the reconvene session, but this is the first time I've presented a budget where we've actually seen a decrease in that percentage in terms of requesting the local funding source fund a percentage smaller than the previous year. So I think that's, I'm hopeful that's a trend that continues. I'm often very vocal that it's very difficult for me to present to my Board of Supervisors because I don't like having to come to you to request more money when I believe it should be the state funding their share, what should be their fair share of the educational costs. But that's the way Virginia's funding scheme for schools works. It has a percentage that is delivered through the state, and of course, they have different funding stressors and decisions they have to make. But anything that's left unfunded that they initiate, then, as you well know, comes to the local level, and then it's put on me as superintendent to present on behalf of the school board to you all as a Board Supervisor. So all that to say, I'm very pleased to at least come to you and be able to show you that relative to last year, what's being asked is actually a smaller percentage of the operating budget to be funded locally than is currently in place for this year. So with that, I'll pause there and accept questions you may have, Madam Chair, or any that would...
Thank you, Dr. Benson. I'm going to try to do this in an organized way and just pause for a second, especially when people are commenting online because there's a delay sometime. So Mr. Stonehill, I'll go with you first.
I don't have anything right now, just following along.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Benson, do you have any data for us? And I know, I know you and all of your staff have been working very hard, scrambling in the last two to three weeks to come up with plans to do what you can to maintain instruction and feed a lot of the children out there who aren't getting regular meals at home necessarily. So first, I do want to thank you for that. I realize this has been an extraordinary task.
I'll pass the one to your thing, because honestly, there are lots of people who are working very hard to, you know, support the nourishment through the meals and through the, doing our best to provide a continuity of learning. And our high school teachers are doing a bang-up job reaching out student by student to try to define how they're situated and to support them and bring enclosure to those credit classes for them. But thank you for recognizing that.
And I want to thank you personally because both of my high school students have heard from their teachers directly in the last several days. So thank you for that. So my question is, is there any way to measure the impact of the school closure with, as far as if you may have any carryover funds available to you? I'm thinking of things like fuel for buses that won't be running for the next two or so months, food and supplies, cleaning supplies, nurse supplies, water consumption, utilities, substitute teacher pay that's not used, substitute bus driver pay, paper and toner costs. So would you be able to report back to us at a later date? Obviously, you would need some time to pull that information together for us, but if there is any carryover that you could work with, with regards to those kinds of things being used for next school year, is that a possibility?
It's certainly a possibility, I think. I would want to, and I know Ms. Ward is an intendant or is online, but I would want to work closely with both Ms. Ward and Ms. Williams on the school's side to be, to be very careful about predicting where that might be. But I'm sure, and I worked with Ms. Ward for many years, and she is brilliant, I'm sure she could help me to do kind of more of a detailed analysis, maybe give you some predictive data about any funds that may remain in some of those accounts you mentioned because of the closure, certainly.
Thanks very much. I appreciate everything you're doing. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Benson, first off, thank you to you and your staff for putting together the presentation tonight, and I commend you and your staff and everyone in King George County schools for what they're having to deal with, the ever-changing educational environment that we're facing right now. With that, I have a couple of observations and questions. So I guess I'm going to play the bad guy. Did last year, I guess I'll do so again. The truth of the matter is, I think with everything that's going on right now, King George is going to be facing a situation, a real situation, where we're going to be realizing less revenues coming in. I hate to use the word recession, but in all reality, I believe at a minimum, King George County is going to be facing a mild recession, and that's at a minimum. With that, I want to do everything within our power and within my influence to avoid raising taxes on citizens this year, given what we are facing. With that, I was looking at the revenue summary that you provided to us tonight. So if, for some reason, let's say the Board of Supervisors was to give the same local contribution that we did last year, I hate the term "level funding," but that's what I'll use this evening. If we were to give level funding, according to the state's or the projections that you provided us, you would still be realizing a $2.1 million increase for the next school year just from state funds alone. Also, what I've been looking at, and I'm still waiting to see what's going to come out of the stimulus that Congress passed and that the President just signed, but if there's going to be any federal and state dollars that will be thrown towards states to increase cost to education, given what we're looking at. So right now, as far as the county, I know Dr. Young has done a great job working with Ms. Ward and department heads of cutting our budgets. I don't believe we're in a position where we could cut anything to the schools. You guys do a fantastic job. The product that's coming out of King George County schools is something to be very proud of. I have, I have nothing negative to say about our schools. They're amazing. The staff, I mean, everything's amazing, but we're not asking to, or I am not asking to, cut the schools at all. But while we're asking to cut departments on the county side, I don't believe we're in a position where we could give additional monies at this point. I'd like to bring some other points up, if I may, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead. Hey, just one thing, your microphone keeps going in and out, so just make sure you're close to it.
It's because I'm such an awesome presence, I'm shocking the electronic system.
Oh, man. Go ahead.
I see Mr. Stonehill shaking his head. Okay, according to the FY 2021 by appropriation unit, Dr. Benson did point out some good, some good numbers here. You know, right now, we're contributing 39.4% to the overall operating budget for the schools, and that would decrease next year to 38.9. But it's, it's numbers. The more money that's in something, you know, those percentages move. In actuality, I'm still looking at this from, at actual dollars. So I am, I really am inclined with, even though the CTE expansion is something very close to my heart, and I would love to see that grow, I still believe that, that this is something that we can't afford to put more dollars to at this point. Now, with all budgets, we could always revisit in the middle of the year. I'm saying from, from a budgetary stance, at this point, I would be willing to go ahead and look at funding at last year's operating levels or local contribution levels, but not anymore, given, given our current circumstances. And one thing that really stuck out to me was you did a survey amongst schools or school employees, asking about their satisfaction with supplies. 95% programs and services, 94% equipment, 87%. While that's outstanding for the schools, I'm sorry to say, given where we're at right now, I don't think the same can be said on the county side. We, the county has continually kicked the can down the road, and even last year, we did what we could to give the schools the raises and stuff for their students, but I don't believe our county employees are going to see a raise this year. And that's just the reality of the situation. Even when I was looking at the positions being requested, I understand some, some were essential, and especially with IEPs and the whole special education world, I know there's things that we have to do because we don't want to see ourselves in lawsuits, but I believe there's other positions in here that aren't so necessary, especially when we're cutting positions on the county side, that I, that I think are essential as well.
Sir, if I may, I want to just clarify, we're not cutting positions, we're just maintaining the same staffing levels.
Exactly. All right, so I misspoke. We're not adding additional positions, which we have identified are needed in the county. Same thing here, the schools aren't cutting positions, but they're looking to add positions. So whereas we're taking that posture, I believe the same should be done across the board. We all have equal play in this. We're all affected by this overall budget. Again, I thank Dr. Benson and his staff for the hard work. I understand this is something very sensitive, but right now, my honest, my honest standpoint right now is level funding to last year's levels and then revisiting six months from now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. Before I ask, I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if we have any citizen budget advisory committee members on, but I didn't know if you were looking to afford them the opportunity to ask any questions as well.
I was going to do that after your turn.
Just, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Other than that, I do have a couple of questions. Dr. Benson, I heard you speak to the ADM. I appreciate that. This isn't really about your budget for this coming up year, but you said that we looked like it was 4370 for this current year. With the fact that schools have been, the school year's essentially been ended, does that impact the funding that will be received from the state in regards to calculating that ADM?
No, and forgive me, Mr. Granger, it was tough to hear. You were kind of going in and out, but I think what you were asking is would the closure impact for this current fiscal year, the ADM that'll be calculated? Is that what you were asking?
Correct, that was my question.
No, they will use the number of days, they'll shorten the window, I'm sure, as if we had, you know, a blizzard, and we were out for several days. Those do not count as days in session. So they'll exclude those days that we were not in session due to the closure, and it'll just impact, you know, the divisor, so to speak. But it should not, it should not affect us significantly. If you're thinking we would lose funding, I've heard nothing as far as the state wanting to, to pull back funding for this current fiscal year.
Okay, that was my question. I was hoping that would be the answer, but thank you for the clarification as well. So I saw, again, the questions you asked of your staff, and I appreciate that they were able to give feedback as well if they were not satisfied with supplies or equipment. Just out of curiosity, was the instructional resources for the reading and language arts textbooks and the emotional learning resources, were those identified as needs based off that feedback in that survey, or was that identified through a different mechanism?
The, from what I recollect, the social-emotional learning was mentioned by several of the respondents from our schools. The language arts, no, not so much. We have a cyclical process for adopting materials to make sure that materials we use are current. And so each year, we will take on one of the core areas and go through a process for reviewing materials with a committee that we put together to put those materials out for public review for anyone who wants to see and provide feedback. But that cost is kind of a rolling cost. You know, we'll look at either social studies, science, or mathematics in subsequent years, and it's a sick, it's a cycle that we go through to evaluate materials and refresh materials. After six or seven years of use, the materials are typically ready for refresh. So this year, it's language arts turn. Actually, it's, that figure represents, I believe, the secondary language arts, and we would, the cost to do all of them, we've decided to split over two years. Since next year, then, we have elective, some of the elective areas, which will be a smaller number, and we did that to be strategic to try to lessen the requests the Board of Supervisors, obviously.
My last question in regards to the counselors. I see that, again, with your projected change of an ADM of 10 additional students, still there's the request for two counselors to meet the required ratios. Is that, are we currently out of compliance in regards to that ratio, or was it just really close at both the elementary and secondary level, and 10 students increases actually pushing them over that ratio?
No, we are in compliance, and there was, there was a period of time given, but the new legislation that was in place, and I, you know, Mr. Bush has a good point, and you know, the next month or two are going to reveal any adjustments the state makes. So this, that could be one area where if the state relaxes the new ratio or the requirement to utilize funding for additional counselors, that could be an amendment. So I, you know, much of it is yet to be seen in terms of the requirements we have if they're amended and have an impact then on the state funding and ultimately the local funding necessary. So it could be in a month. If that's, if we don't need to meet a requirement, then we could pull back, you know, at least on one of those positions.
Understood. I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification. Other than that, I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say thank you, Dr. Benson. I know that this can always be a difficult meeting with being, the schools being biggest portion of our budget. I know it's even more difficult being a tele-attendance meeting, but thank you very much for pulling together the information and being able to present with everything going on. I know it's been very difficult, but thank you for professionalism and being able to still be able to provide this information and present.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Is there any one of the citizen advisory members that is online that would like to ask? Is there any one of the citizen advisory members that is online that would like to ask a question?
This is Frank, I'm good.
Alright, you're good, Frank? Alright, would anybody else like to ask a question that is a citizen advisory member? Alright, since I haven't got a response. Dr. Benson, I do want to thank you again for your staff and, and everyone in the community that has, has been helping with the lunches and everything you've done in, in this time. It's all, you know, a work in progress, and you guys are doing a great job. And then my, my question, I have a couple of questions. Is, you mentioned the principal, or assistant principal at the middle school. Because of what happened, are you still planning on moving the, the first sixth grade class being what would have been the, the fourth grade class this year? Or are you going to move that up a year?
The, the first sixth grade class would be the year after this coming year.
Okay.
But we've not changed that plan.
Well, with that being said, I was wondering if that administrator could be held off one year since that would be the major driving force for that extra administrator?
Yeah, I don't, I think we would have to then, of course, you know, no matter where this falls in terms of local support, then the school board then would be, you know, I'd make recommendations to them in terms of adjustments to meet whatever the, the local funding is determined to be. So I, I'd, I'd want to go through a, rather than on the spot answer, could we, you know, we can do, it's possible to do anything as far as cuts. But I'd, I'd really want to be more pragmatic about weighing the impact of cutting ones versus another in terms of adjustments we would make to the budget. So I understand your question, and I know that we are, we are always want to go to perhaps a solution term of funding. But just as the budget was across many people and input and the wisdom of our organization and school board, I'd do the very same with any project, or projecting any possible cuts to make things balance.
And, and I understand that, I only bring that up because Mr. Bush brought up, we, we have a couple of positions that we did need that we will not be able to fund this year because of, of everything that's going on. So it's just, just a, a thought to be put out there. One other question, as Ms. Cupkin mentioned and Mr. Bush, is that the extra money that was probably going to be available because the schools did close early, that we make sure that we capture that and, you know, as that is a possibility of money that is available, or going back to the general fund as a possibility. And especially with the courts, there's no need for officials at this time or, you know, the, the extra maintenance on facilities being open. Just putting it a thought in your head.
No, and it's a very good thought. And again, I'll, I'll work with, with both my financial manager at the school division, Ms. Williams and Ms. Ward, to kind of project that. The only, as that question was being asked, to ensure we meet, you know, the spending requirement. The monies we receive from DOE are attached to the spending requirements. And ordinarily, in a, in a school year, we more than spend what we are afforded at the state level, as you saw from that thirty-nine percent. I just want to make sure categorically we have satisfied the spending requirement, and we're not trying to recapture monies that are actually state monies versus local money, so to speak. That's all.
Okay, well, thank you.
And it's a good thought.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate that. Do we have any other questions for my fellow board members?
I have, I have additional questions, ma'am, if, if I may. Once the board is done.
Go ahead.
Just a little bit. So I know the board supervisors understands because I have been sharing discussions with them, but I think that just for the general public and for Dr. Benson, it'd probably be prudent for you all to understand the actions that the county is taking to be, I mean, put together a responsible budget to make sure that we don't. And I'm not being exaggerated when I say potentially financially shipwreck the county because of a recession and we're not reacting appropriately. Policies that's already been put out to our directors, and they've already been responding in kind. We have suspended non-essential travel for all county employees for fiscal year 2021. Non-essential travel is defined as travel that does not apply to a certification for one's profession or lead to continuing education for one's profession. For example, the Commonwealth attorney is going to have to attend some classes for continuing education to maintain a law license, so naturally that travel is going to be approved. But there is not going to be any non-essential traveling taking place. There's not going to be conferences, network opportunities. I'm even recommending to the board that we consider suspending travel to the homestead. We, we're not pursuing any non-essential travel next year. We also suspended and removed capital purchases from the county's budget proposal that includes the purchases of furniture and vehicles. In addition, I made it quite clear to our county employees, and at first it was a little bit of pukes back, but I think that they're starting to understand that there will be absolutely zero pay increases for county employees in fiscal year 2021. Save public safety professionals simply because we had to respond in kind to the changes in the market. But for county employees, the, the general government county employees, there will be no pay increases next year. In addition, we are not going to realize any additional, additional staffing levels in fiscal year 2021. If the position hasn't been created and already populated in fiscal year nineteen twenty, that, there will be no position added or populated in fiscal year 2021. I'm of the thought process, the county has been able to meet its mission with the current staffing, and I don't see why we can't wait another year and continue that current staffing to meet the demands of a recession. Then we take another look at it in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. In addition, it's gotten to the, to the point where I ban non-essential uniform purchases. So if you go into a department like Community Development or Parks and Rec and you see individuals wearing King George County T-shirts, those purchases will not be made next year. Only mission essential uniforms for our public safety officers, general properties will be purchased. All non-essential uniform purchases will be suspended. I want to make it quite clear that all the numbers that we're seeing, not only in King George County, but through my discussions with the regional county administrators and the city manager, we're heading into a recession. It, it's, is, is inevitable. As you all see, you traveled down Route Three, you traveled down Route Three One. No one's visiting the stores, businesses are closed. All those revenues that are supposed to come into the county's coffers are not going to be realized. Therefore, I'd highly advise that we take the appropriate action to make sure that we embrace ourselves for the impacts of the COVID-nineteenth's impact on King George County. I'm looking at the budget for the schools, and one thing, one question that I have, Dr. Benson, is does maintain competitive compensation for nine-hundred-eighty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars? Let's make this clear, is this a compensation increase for teachers only? Or is this for all five-hundred-plus school employees across the board?
It's tough, it's awfully tough to hear, Dr. Young. I, I think your question is the employee increase as proposed would apply to all employees in the school division. You are correct in that, I'd say, and forgive me if I'm, if I'm off, what I was trying to glean from your comment, the, the difference is the state currently, or this current budget is based on what came out of the, the conference committee between the two houses of the General Assembly. That proposal was a two percent, or funding to support a two percent increase for teachers in both of the fiscal years of that biennial budget. I, I don't know, it could very well be that they revisit that cost. But when the General Assembly, it's a little different on the school side in that when the General Assembly proposes an employee increase, whether it's for teachers or whichever employee groups or everyone, it, it predicates or it assumes then a local contribution to that or a local match to make that compensation increase whole. And I'm not, I'm in no way trying to imply that you have no choice as a board of supervisors. You certainly do. I'm simply just trying to illustrate that at the county, if, if you elect to provide an employee increase, that is completely, you know, your, the decision, a local decision where, I believe. And there may be, you know, monies you receive for, for emergency services. I'm not, I'm just not that familiar with county budget. But I know in our case, that anytime General Assembly members vote for an increase in the schools, it, it really is making a decision in an indirect way for every locality in Virginia, an assumption that there would be a local amount there to support that increase. And again, that's just the way Virginia has structured their funding scheme for schools. It's a, you know, it's not a decision I make or you make. It is the system that we use in Virginia, and it does, it does place this, this dilemma squarely on the locality to deliberate. And I fully understand that the county will have, every county is going to have adjustments to make, but we're going to have to, to be watchful in terms of the, the financial variables that are in play to help support all services for our county to include schools. And again, I, I fully anticipate over the next several weeks, we will see what impact, if any, the stimulus funds has to try to ease any action the state may take with regards to K-12, with the space for, for K-12 funding. I hope that answers at least in part your, your question, Dr. Young.
Yes, it does, it just, my only concern is that I would understand a compensation increase for teachers since that is a critical profession, no different than public safety officials are a critical asset for the county, and we're compensating them accordingly. But with the compensation structure as presented currently, it's really puts it in a position where if you're a groundskeeper for the county, you don't get a pay raise. But if you're a groundskeeper for the schools, you get a pay raise. If you're administrative assistant for the county, you don't get a pay raise. But if you're an administrative assistant for the schools, then you get a pay raise. I think that, 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 that can create a little bit of dissonance between the county budget and the schools' budget. And I, I would ask that we all take that into consideration as the board moves forward with their discussions and decision on how they're going to move forward with the school budget. I mean, with just compensation alone of nine-hundred-eighty-four thousand dollars and additional staffing, that's two million dollars that we're looking at. And I question if that is absolutely necessary. In a, in a, in a regular year, I could see that. But in a, in a, a year of recession, I'm just questioning if that's absolutely necessary. And that's just the thoughts that I have that I want to share with the board and the general public.
Dr. Young, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Dr. Young's talking about this nine-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars to maintain competitive compensation. At the end of the day, that, that's a good talking point. But what it comes down to is this board simply allocates an amount in local contribution. That is a decision for the school board to decide what their priorities are, to set those priorities and move forward. We give them a pot of money. If their priority is to compensate their employees, their independently elected officials, they can do so with that. That's their decision. If they want to put that money towards instruction or something else, that's their decision. The only talking point at hand for this body is how much can we afford to give in our local contribution to outfit the entire school board's budget? So I, I, I totally understand those points, and I think Dr. Young made a very good point. That's something we have to deal with because we have employees on the county side. You got a groundskeeper or someone that works for the schools. The schools get, tend to get across-the-board pay raises where ours tend to be targeted, just like what we did with the compensation package for the public safety officers. So that's something to keep in mind. But at the end of the day, it's all just talking points. It's a decision that the school board has to make how they want to prioritize their funding. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Dr. Young, what, what, Ms. Cupkin, do you have a question?
If I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank Dr. Young for putting all of that information out there together all at once. It is part of conversations that we have been having with Dr. Young. Everyone on our board is aware of this, that we're having to cut. We don't want to do it, we don't want to cut back on things, but we, we have no choice because we do not want to pass that on to the taxpayers. We realize what likely is coming and that a lot of people are going to be hurting, whether that's people who have been out of work, our citizens that have a, a difficult time making their property tax bills, or our businesses who, who just don't have the foot traffic anymore and aren't able to meet their sales taxes or... Across the board, a lot of people are going to be hurting, and we need to do everything we can. I think we all agreed to this a couple of weeks ago when we talked about the public safety package, that there were some things we felt like we, we could do and we had to do to maintain competitive, especially because right now, those people are on the front lines. I just, every, every department across the board for the county has to give, has to be willing to give. And so I just would caution the school board to take a good, hard look at, at where you're at right now and see if there are things that you can find where you can give. Please do.
Thank you, Ms. Cupkin. Mr. Stonehill, Mr. Granger, do you have any other thoughts?
I'm good for the moment. Dr. Benson, I just had a couple of questions. I was just going back to the needed positions. So the, the point fives are those?
Mr. Stonehill, we lost you there. You go ahead.
I'm on now, you there?
Yep, I can hear you, go ahead.
Did you hear my question, Dr. Benson?
I did not, about half of it. You said, back to the positions, I mean, you mentioned point five, and that was where you cut off.
Okay, yeah, the needed, I'm looking at the needed positions chart and, or slide, and it's, I see like the point fives and the twos. Did I miss that? And is that just a, is that a part-time position?
It would be, in the case of the CTE, those are, those are half-time positions that are currently, since that we'd like to move to full-time, then offer sections, additional sections for additional students to take those classes. The two, I've, Chris Dines, I've lost the ability to go back in my slides, I think. Oh, wait. I don't know, is it a two in parties, Mr. Stonehill?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was trying to pull the presentation back up, let me see if I can.
I believe it's saying it's two special education paraprofessionals and three reading specialists.
Yes.
And it's showing the total dollar figure for all of those positions along that line item. But correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Benson.
Alright, that was, that was my only question, and, you know, I, I would have to echo my colleagues' remarks of just, everybody's going to have to tighten down, obviously, because none of us have any idea where this is, where we're going here in the next six months or whatever. So that's, that's all I have.
Certainly open to that, and I want to make sure everybody knows that the school board approved this prior to all of this, this initiating, the school closure. And please understand that I'm presenting a budget that was approved by the school board at that time. And again, I don't mean to sound like a broken record. We fully expect, I know, the General Assembly to adjust, and then our, our school board and certainly localities to adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you. I know all of us have been having conversations with Dr. Young, and we're really staying on top of it to try to make sure that we, we prepare for the worst but hope for the best, and, and that we make sure that, you know, the citizens that are struggling have the funds and the need, and we, and we just do the right thing for the citizens of King George. I mean, Dr. Young, do you have anything else on this topic?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to advise the board that you all do not have to make a decision tonight. According to state code, the board has until May fifteenth to approve a budget for the schools. So just for you, just for your all's consideration, there is time to think about it.
Now, does anybody, before I give a suggestion, does anybody have a suggestion of what? I, I think we should, you know, sit on the number, you know, sit in the orbit, maybe wait for Dr. Benson to come back with a little bit more information, or what do you guys think?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Bush?
I, I think there's some validity in taking a relook at this when we really have a better idea of what the federal and the state money is going to be coming out of the stimulus and what, if anything, the state is going to be doing towards their ADM numbers or the funding associated with that. However, with that said, I know we have a timeline, and we need to give Dr. Young and Ms. Ward some time to be able to build. and we need to give Dr. Young and Ms. Ward some time to be able to build, build out a budget so we kind of know what we're looking at. So I'm at the point to where I would be willing to at least give a number for the time being and take a revisit, but for budget building purposes for the county, I would, I would like to move that we level fund at current year funding, just, just to move forward with this budget within an anticipation of relooking at it and it's subject to being amended in future budget work sessions when we have more information. But I do believe we need to give Dr. Young and Ms. Ward something to work with to be able to move forward with our budget. And also one alibi, I'm sorry, I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank my colleague on, on the school board, Mr. TC Collins. He always avails himself to, to questions and conversation. So it's really a pleasure being able to work with somebody and to discuss things. We both speak very bluntly to each other and I appreciate his candor and I hope he appreciates mine, but it's, it's nice to be able to talk back and forth with, with our colleagues on the school board to be able to work towards a common goal. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I want to also thank Ms. Tolliver and Ms. Pantera who have been online listening also, and that's the only two other ones that I've seen online. But we have a, a thought from Mr. Bush. Mr. Bush, do I have any other discussion on that? Or second?
I, I don't think we need a second or anything along those lines. We're not voting upon it. If we want to put a placeholder in there for now, I'm amenable saying last year's budget number, but this is going to be a moving target for the next however many weeks. And so, I mean, it's just, it's just a placeholder. That's all it's going to be and we're going to have to re, we will have to revisit it. It's not, you know, it's not a matter, I don't think that's going to be the final number. That's what I'm saying. But, but we can put something in there just to work with numbers for the time being.
So, so we have a consensus just to have Dr. Young put in a level funding amount and then at our next work session with everything else, we revisit if Dr. Benson has more numbers and more information.
I'm amenable to that.
Mr. Bush, Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Stonehill?
I'm good with that.
All right. We have a consensus, Dr. Young. Thank you, Dr. Benson, all you've done and all the school board members and all the work you've done.
Assets, maybe even chemicals, supplies, any resource that a county may find that they're running critically low on, disagreement would authorize the committed members to provide those resources to our neighboring locality in need to help them overcome what other obstacle that they are, are, are facing. I'm asking for the board to consider authorizing, me to execute this agreement now because it is the intent of the region to go ahead and move forward with executing the document and issuing a press release on April the 2nd. In addition, I would like to advise the board that I'm moving forward with a request for you all to authorize executing now because it is non-binding. If you'll see, there's language in the agreement that states that, hey, we'll provide the resources if it does no harm to our community and we will also commit those resources, but in the event that those need, resources are needed to meet our local need, those resources can be pulled back within 24 hour, hours notice back to the supplying locality. In addition, I believe that this agreement, to be honest, is helpful for King George County because more likely that we would be in a position to execute our request for assistance versus us provide support to our larger locality like a Stafford or Spotsylvania. So given those aspects of the agreement, I'd like to request that the board authorize the county administrator to execute this memorandum of agreement as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Sorry, here, who gave a second?
This guy.
So we have, did I hear a second? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I'll second.
All right. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young. So we have next steps.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to request the board identify another date for a, a budget work session. I'd highly recommend that we look at advertising a special meeting for sometime next week. Wilma and the finance department have been working very hard with the directors to get the department expenditures ready for presentation since we put out the new policies, striking a lot of the, the, the extra items out of the budget. And I believe that we'll be ready to present that department budget request to the board supervisors next week.
Do you need a date from us then?
Yes, ma'am. I need a date and time.
I'm going to be open.
I think we're all available pretty much.
On top of the board meeting on Tuesday, right? Another date?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd recommend that we maintain the board meeting for county business because there are going to be some things on the agenda that needs to be addressed. And I think for the sake of time, we probably want to have a separate meeting for the budget work session discussion.
I'm going to be honest, India Day works for me with the current situation in the evening. So Monday, Wednesday, any of those days?
I'm pretty open.
I think we're all pretty wide open these days.
Yeah. Do you want to do Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday, one week from today. That'd be great. Yes, ma'am. One week from today, same time would work for the staff. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The Wednesday at 6:00 PM would work for the staff.
Tracking. That worked.
I'll work with 6:00 PM. So 6:00 PM next Wednesday?
Roger that, ma'am. 6:00 PM, Wednesday, the 8th of April, 2020, in the boardroom.
Okay. Well, you got a date then.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that would be the last, correct?
That, that won't be the last work session though, ma'am. We're trying to, we're trying to encompass as much as possible, but we'll still have to go through revenues. So what we're anticipating is we'll do the department expenditures next week. Seven days from then, we'll have the revenues completed and we'll be ready to come to the board with a, a recommended budget and a request to advertise a public hearing.
Okay. All right. So do I have, that is all we need for today's work session, correct, Dr. Young?
Roger that, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a motion of adjournment?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, April 7th at 6:30 in the boardroom.
Second.
Hold on one second. Dr. Young, is that correct that we have to meet earlier next Tuesday? Or are we still meeting at 6:30?
Uh, no, ma'am. We're still meeting at our advertised schedule, 6:30 PM on Tuesday.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Chair votes aye. The meeting is ensured. Thank you, everyone who's joined us for this event. I think it worked really well. We had a little, couple of little kinks, but I think it did really well. Thank you, everyone, for participating in this first time meeting.